Got one. Where are our colleagues? Councilmember Jeffries? Vanita and Kwaya, would you, or Noah, would you see who's out in the hall, please? We need to get started. See if any council members are out there. We've got councilmembers Walsh and councilmember Jeffries. There comes councilmember Albee. Alex, would you, or George, would you guys go out there and just encourage our council members to come on in, please?
No.
Okay. Okay, we have a quorum. All right, good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the Citizens Forum. As I call your name, you will have the privilege of the floor for two minutes. Please understand, this is not Q and A. Councilmembers will not answer questions or make comments because everybody has two minutes, and if we do that, we're giving some people more time than others. So, to be fair, we will listen. Staff members are all around the room, and so if you have an issue that needs to be addressed, when you finish speaking, please look to the back, and a staff member will get your contact information and help you. So, thank you so much. The first person up is Jonathan Norman, and you have the privilege of the floor for two minutes.
One month has passed of what we're told is a ceasefire in Gaza. A ceasefire where the bombings continue, where more than 240 Palestinians are allowed to be killed, where Israel can demolish more than 1,500 buildings. A ceasefire where Israel's still blocking aid, allowing in less than a third of the promised minimum requirement. As the U.N. reports, Israel is blocking things like bottles of baby formula and syringes needed to administer vaccines to children. A clear intent to murder babies through the use of starvation and disease. And we're told this is a nation working for peace. Working for peace while they continue to violate the ceasefire with Lebanon, while they bomb and build further expansions into Syria, while their settlers, under protection of the Israeli military, carried out 2,350 terrorist attacks in the West Bank in just the last month, while they killed the 47th child this year, tear gassed a 13-year-old till unconscious, and then blocked his ambulance. Working for peace while they vote to execute Palestinian hostages held in their prisons, hostages like 16-year-old American citizen Mohammed Ibrahim. Working for peace while they celebrate the terrorist forces that work these concentration camps, celebrate them for conducting mass rapes on blindfolded and bound defenseless prisoners. Does any of this sound like someone you'd call an ally? Does any of this sound like someone you do business with? Well, it does to the drone company Skydio, the same drone company we now deploy in our city of Cincinnati, the same AI by Axon and their Fucus surveillance tech. This council voted to expand. As it hands over data to ICE, your constituents are expected to believe these are the tools that will keep them safe. They shouldn't trust that safety to a product built and tested off the murders of hundreds of thousands. They should believe in racial justice from the equipment used to maintain an apartheid. You've demonstrated what we've been saying this whole time: silence, inaction, tacit endorsement, manifest as straightforward collaboration. You've brought these fascist instruments into the city to appease some billionaire masters. You're reaching out and shaking the hands drenched in the blood of the modern Holocaust.
Thank you. The next speaker is Michael Bosch. You have the privilege of the floor for two minutes.
Good to go now?
Yes.
Thanks for having me. My name is Mike Bash. I've lived at 2009 Elm for 15 years. I had this idea a long time ago to move over the Rhine and to start investing in the neighborhood. I've since developed, I think I'm on my eighth building now, I'm doing 510 West Liberty, which is by the soccer stadium. We're doing 13 apartments there, but I personally invested over $7 million in over the Rhine, and everybody on my block has been calling the city for the last eight months about Privy, a new nightclub that is occupying the space that used to be E19, which was a gay bar that we loved. Privy has been out of control since they've come in. I'm the person that found the handgun laying on the ground Sunday morning, so this would have been, I think, two Sundays ago now, the morning following four people getting shot there. We've been calling the police and letting people know what was going to happen at Privy if we didn't do something, and it escalated to the point where four people did get shot there, and it's going to continue to happen. This establishment is a complete nuisance to the neighborhood. No Airbnbs in the neighborhood can rent apartments because all the reviews are about Privy. They're fighting, loitering, smoking weed, smashing liquor bottles on the sidewalk. When they let out at 2:00 a.m., they don't go home, they just hang out in front of our houses in Blair stereos. So, I guess we, as the neighborhood, are asking for you guys to help us feel safe in our homes. We don't know if this is some type of agreement we need to have with the police, but people are going to die at Privy if you guys don't help us. I found a handgun just walking, on a walk, and I called the police, made sure they got the handgun, but this was literally just laying on the sidewalk where a child...
Thank you so much. I just wanted to give you a quick update that the police are aware of the meeting you requested, and they told our office that because it's under investigation, they just wanted to postpone the meeting temporarily, but they do plan on reaching out to you. So, thank you. Okay, the next speaker is Lena Zarub, followed by Stanford Poole. And Ms. Zarub, you have the privilege of the floor for two minutes.
What I'm going to share is extremely difficult to me and to anyone with a conscience. A new report published by the Palestinian Center for Human Rights documents organized systematic sexual violence committed against Palestinian detainees, including women, inside Israeli prisons and military camps. These testimonies were collected by lawyers and researchers from recently released Palestinian hostages. A Palestinian woman testified, "I wished for death every moment after they raped me. I was left naked the whole day in the room where I spent three days. They put me on a metal table, pressed my chest and head against it, cupped my hands to the end of the bed, and pulled my legs apart forcefully. A man began raping me. I started screaming, and they beat me on the back and head while I was blindfolded. I was raped four times by Israeli soldiers. Stripped and filmed naked, one of the soldiers said they would post my photos on social media. You cannot pretend ignorance. This is what your silence protects. This is what you support when you block an arms embargo. Changing the word occupation to plight will not wipe out war crimes. It can only protect war criminals' feelings. You are willing to protect relationships and careers instead of standing up for what's right. You can't claim to have values when you only apply it on people who look like you. We don't need your empathy. We are asking this city to stand with justice and to abide by international law. Sexual torture is a war crime. Israel is raping our mothers, sisters, and daughters. Divest from every institution, corporation, and investment that is complicit in genocide and apartheid. Not $1 of this city's money should fund war crimes. We demand that every Cincinnatian who served in the IDF to be investigated and prosecuted. History will record every statement."
Thank you. Mr. Poole, Stanford Poole, you have the privilege of the floor for two minutes, followed by Stefan Pryor.
Noah would get five minutes, and we on two minutes, and we're supposed to be a bigger city. On this, everybody up here went to a meeting and said they're going to do better, and they're going to listen to the people. Now, you can listen to the people but not do nothing, that's just nothing, and that's what some of the... Now, Crandide, he not even here. He, I didn't go nowhere with him, but the rest of you say you're going to do better and that. You've been there four years, you got a paycheck for four years, you got benefit for a paycheck, and a title. You're supposed to earn your money. As we look at everything that's going on here, this president he got that taking people livelihood and life, and everybody come here to ask for some help from y'all. Palestinians getting killed, children getting killed. Do we care? Probably not. A lady, a Palestinian, gets spit on, on your city council land, and you do nothing. The women on here, you should be outraged. The men, if you're a man, should be outraged when a man spit on another, on a woman, that's defecation almost. But you go home, get on your church, and you got your little kids and that, and you're supposed to have a good family. And then when you come here, you don't do nothing for the poor people, you're doing everything for the rich people. You sell the airport for 35 years or lease it to the rich guys, just what they told you to do. You gave $2 million to secretly do a 25-25, and here you are, you're supposed to make decisions, you had some rich guys make the decision for you. And y'all are supposed to be educated, dedicated leaders. And they looking at me like I'm wrong. If I'm wrong, raise your hand. If I'm wrong, you're wrong. Ms. Parks? It's still rape and...
Thank you, Mr. Poole. Okay, the next speaker is Stefan Pryor. Mr. Pryor, you have the privilege of the floor for two minutes, followed by Miranda Hurd.
Good afternoon, City Council. I got a message for y'all. When you are wrong, and we are not aware of it, someone has to point out the wrong. The most difficult thing is when somebody points out, pointed out. Do you accept it? Do you reject it? Or do you hate the person who pointed out the wrong? So, don't hate me, y'all. Y'all wrong for this Duke, Dynergy, this new Sopac. Y'all wrong if y'all vote that too, because it's a nonprofit energy company. Nonprofit energy companies should have a conflict entrance of doing business with the city of Cincinnati, and they doing business of a sustainable Ohio Public Energy Council, and then you got Southeast Ohio Public Energy Council, two different names if y'all look at the amendment that they wrote, but it's super wrong. This curfew for this food truck, y'all didn't vote on that. Y'all voted on the curfew for the youth, but y'all didn't vote on no curfew for the food trucks, and that's super wrong. It's supposed to go through y'all first to vote on about this food truck. People losing money every day on weekends at that, that they make their money on the weekend about these bars when they open. Would you put a curfew on the liquor license? 11 o'clock, last call for alcohol. No, y'all won't. So, y'all need to change this curfew on these food trucks. It's super wrong. It's really super wrong. I heard you today, Mr. Scotty Johnson, Councilmember Scotty Johnson, about let Cheryl Long do her job, where her job is to make sure y'all do this amendment right. She shouldn't have made no decision on putting a curfew on a food truck. She got that decision from Fourth Street Business District. That's who told her to do it. Anyway, I love you guys, and nothing you can do about it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pryor. Miranda Hurd. And Ms. Hurd, you have the privilege of the floor for two minutes, and Ms. Hurd is followed by Mr. Paul Dean.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name's Miranda Hurd, and I just moved and over the Rhine, and I have a situation about this parking, okay?
Ms. Hurd, would you speak into the microphone, please? I'm sorry. Okay.
And I feel like the parking is not fair for us to stay on Vine Street. All right? I'm a handicapped, I'm a senior citizen, all right? I have to drive around the block about eight times before I decide if I want to park on 15th Street or pay $15, which I don't have, to park in that lot. I can't park in front of my door, I can't walk far. And then I come out today, and I have a ticket. Now, mind you, on 15th Street, we have people that don't even live there and have, that don't have a sticker, but they can park there. So, they taking the parking space from the ones that paid and lived there. I want to know who can I talk to about this, because I'm a senior citizen, I'm a handicapped, and I can't walk far. I want to follow up to talk to somebody about this. And everybody say, why don't you call 311 so they can give you one of those handicapped parks? That ain't going to work, because anybody can park there, and there I am, not having a parking spot again. And I can't afford to keep paying these tickets. I just can't. And I, like I said, I want to follow up so I can speak to someone about this. Now, how do I go about that?
Okay, are you finished speaking? I don't want to interrupt your two minutes.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Rains, will you please come and get Ms. Hurd and take her to talk to Alex? And you can go right through that door to my office. Thank you so much. Okay, Mr. Dean, you're next, and Mr. Dean is followed by Mike Ullhorn. I don't know if he's on, is he in person on, is Mr. Ullhorn in the room? He's on Zoom, okay, for some reason. Oh, I see. Okay, here you go. Okay. Paul Bean. Excuse me. Thank you. Do you want me to just keep the Zoom?
I came down here yesterday, I got a New Life program. I gave y'all a package. I came down here yesterday to take a seat if it was here. Well, it's not here. Why? What happened to it? They say y'all steal. Lord Jesus, you stealing people's justice and everything, you know? It's such a damn shame. But you got 24 hours, you got till Monday to find this package. I got some people that's interested in it, and I ain't got time to play with y'all. See, I come down here for justice. I've been in a car accident. I told all y'all, ain't none of y'all different here, told you I seen the man that took and hit me. I still can't get no justice. You know, I've been a construction worker for 20-some years and paid all, I ain't owe nobody nothing but God. So, y'all got some work to do in this city. He tell me, oh, Pierball want to talk to you, just just to get me out of this building so you can have my package again. I tell you what, he said it costs too much. She says she ain't seen it. Another lady say, you got to talk to them. I tell you one damn thing, you better find this project and find it today, okay? Because see, this gone too far for me. I could go get my own justice if I want to, he stopped me from doing that. See, that's what y'all want to do, make everybody take and go whip somebody ass if they did something to them. That can happen. I don't give a damn.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bean. The next speaker is Adam Hayward. And Mr. Hayward, you have the privilege of the floor for two minutes, and you'll be followed by Jerry Coach. Okay, go right ahead. You have the floor.
My name is Adam Hayward.
And sir, would you speak a little closer to the mic, please?
My name is Adam Hayward. My grandfather, my grandfather in these halls.
Okay, excuse me. Will you start his, Mr. Hayward's two minutes over, please? All right, thank you. Please proceed.
My name is Adam Joel Hayward. My grandfather was George C. Hayward. He was the master planner for the city of Cincinnati from the '40s, '50s, '60s, and the '70s. His influence on this city is everything. 275, I-71, I-75. I went to Seven Hills, I went to Cincinnati Country Day, I went to SCPA, and I graduated from there. I created the 529 Student Savings Plan there with Central Trust in 1989. It has now saved half a trillion dollars for children across America. This 529 plan is about to be implemented as well with PNC Bank here in Cincinnati.
You still have a minute left.
What I will say is this: Right next door is St. Peters and Chains. St. Peters and Chains was orchestrated by George C. Hayward. That is why it was rebuilt, and how it was rebuilt. I'm going to be going. My lineage also goes to General Motors and Cadillac. They will be coming here on the steps of St. Peters and Chains. After that, Pierball, my advertising firm, Seuigen Productions, could quite possibly put him in the president's seat. I've given the bailiff, whoever the gentleman is over there, my information. I'm here for Cincinnati, but I'm also here for Flint, Michigan, because George C. Hayward made Flint, Michigan what it is.
Okay, thank you so much. Jerry Coach? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hayward. And Mr. Coach is followed by our two speakers on Zoom. You have the privilege of the floor for two minutes.
Okay, I was going to ask if you could start the timer over, but that's fine. My name, Gary Coach.
Sir, we can start. We can start over.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
My name, Gary Coach. I'm here to address a complaint I have against CFDS CPD. I called on 7/13/2025 in LA for my sister. She suffered a TBI earlier that day at her job. That means this is a workers' call issue. I called because she had a heart attack. I was very verbatim with 911. There was no mistake in the information that we shared with one another. Engine station 38 showed up. They put on a ridiculous performance. No AED, no oxygen, no heart carrying board, no neck brace. Remember, this is a TBI and a heart attack, so there's a protocol to how we care for these victims. Furthermore, I go put in a complaint at their station. I know not to get in that complaint, so I take it to another station. Next, I go down to their station. I have this shirt here on. I called with a peaceful protest. I just jogged up and down the street with this shirt on until the police came. When the police got there, they searched me, handcuffed me, put me in the back of a police car, turned the heat on, made me make sure, I made sure they turned their computer on, and see it recorded before she typed my social in. Put me in the car, turned the heat on. I cooperated, then I got out and kept protesting, because she didn't even give me a warning. It happened two days later again. Now, yesterday, one of these investigators, Kevin UHL, called my sister to go over her report, okay? Her report is false, it's fraudulent, everything on the report is false. Another guy who was supposed to be on leave, Christel, he sent her her old report. It was a blank document. I think y'all should investigate.
Okay, thank you so much. Next, we have our two speakers on Zoom. The first one is Michael Ullhorn.
Yes, hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great, thank you. This is Mike Ullhorn, and I'm on here again about what Greater Cincinnati Water Works does. They invoice people when they're providing absolutely nothing, but they have water turned off at the meter. Of course, it is blatant violation of a higher revised code 2913. I've been calling the council members, mayor's office, nobody ever returns my call, and nobody's doing anything about this fraud, but maybe, just maybe, it's not fraud. They have set the precedent with Greater Cincinnati Water Works that companies can actually charge people just for being ready to provide something and people having access to it. That's what they claim they're charging for. I started charging that way with my company. I've been, I've started charging the people at Greater Cincinnati Water Works and the city council members, because I figured that since they believe people should be paying just for nothing but being ready to provide something and people having access to it, that they would actually pay that bill. But they're not. Just imagine when all the companies start following the precedent set by Greater Cincinnati Water Works, and we all start receiving thousands and thousands of invoices from all the companies following the precedent that has been set. I thought it was illegal. Apparently, I'm wrong. Nobody's doing anything about it. It just keeps continuing. I guess I'm going to have to just follow the precedent set by Greater Cincinnati Water Works and start suing the people that are not paying bill that's the monthly base rate, just like Greater Cincinnati Water Works charges. And the courts have set precedent that people have to pay for that and have to pay Greater Cincinnati Water Works when they're providing nothing, nothing of value, but they got the water turned on at the meter. And then I'll start collecting money from all the people, just like Greater Cincinnati Water Works does, and I'm ready to provide my services to, and people have access to it. Be interesting to see what happens. I guess the news media might pick up a court... I guess the news media might pick up a court case. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Ullhorn, thank you so much. Our last speaker is Derek Blasengame. Mr. Blasengame, can you hear us?
I can hear you very well. Can you hear me?
You have the privilege of the floor for two minutes.
I appreciate it, Madam President. Derek Blasengame, just chiming in here on that ordinance you all are gonna vote on regarding putting juveniles or putting juveniles under curfew. I'm just concerned that Vine Street, Short Vine, Quarryville, Clifton is becoming Little Haiti in the city of Cincinnati. And if you are a viable legislator, you care about public safety in the city of Cincinnati, you will vote yes on this ordinance to enforce a curfew. These young people are terrorizing the business districts in those areas based on my research and my inquiries. And it's necessary. It's much needed. And we also need to increase the bed space over at Juvenile Hall so that juvenile detention, so these individuals can be arrested and can be charged or their parents can be cited for violating these curfews. These businesses have a right to have, you know, peaceful means of operation without the interference from juveniles. And we need to go ahead and pass this ordinance. And the Cincinnati Police Department needs to enforce it strictly and hold parents accountable who are not monitoring their children's behaviors and who are not assessing where their children are at certain hours of the day. Parents, you are responsible for your children at all times, and you can be held accountable for their actions. Derek Blasengame, the government watchdog, I holler.
Thank you. And that concludes the Citizens Forum. We have about a minute before we start the business portion of our meeting.
Good afternoon. We will begin today's business portion of Cincinnati City Council. And the clerk will please call the roll.
Councilmember Nolan?
Here.
Councilmember Owens?
Here.
Councilmember Parks?
Here.
Councilmember Walsh?
Here.
Councilmember Albi?
Here.
Councilmember Kramer Ding?
Here.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Here.
Please stand for a moment of silence. And now the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The minutes from the previous meeting will be approved and filed without objection. Hearing none, they'll be approved and filed. Moving to our agenda, items 1 through 20 are as indicated. Item 21 has been, is transmitted by the mayor. Items 22 through 30 are as indicated. Item 31, first reading, please.
An ordinance establishing new capital improvement program project Gilbert Avenue Safety Phase 1 to provide resources for a two-mile-long complete street along Gilbert Avenue.
Roll call and suspension.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Parks?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albi?
Yes.
Councilmember Kramer Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer Ding.
Mayor, I'll defer to my colleague, Councilmember Jeffries, who is the council's representative on the OKI Committee.
Mr. Jeffries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is one of several items today and in the next couple of weeks that will be coming through from OKI. A total of about $25 million in investment from the feds. This one is for Gilbert Avenue, which we've been planning for several years. I think it's gonna go into construction next year. So the next two are huge investments. It's $8.8 million. Would not be possible without these investments from the federal government.
Thank you, Mr. Jeffries. Further comments?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Owens.
Thank you. Yeah, so I'm just really excited about this corridor connecting, further connecting downtown and uptown. We last year invested an additional $2 million to support Crown's work throughout there. And they're certainly partners that are excited about this transformation as well, so.
Thank you. Further comments? Roll call and passage of item 31, please.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Parks?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albi?
Yes.
Councilmember Kramer Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
I'm sorry I missed a public comment. We were getting prepared for State of the City and the vice mayor was very kind to be ready to convene council today. So I've got her script here, and she's added the word "please" after all of my requests to the clerk. So I just wanted to put that in the record, that she is so thoughtful that she has written the word "please" throughout the script, so. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Item 32, first reading, please.
An ordinance establishing new capital improvement program project Lick Run Connector to provide resources for a 2.4-mile bicycle and pedestrian improvement project known as the Lick Run Connector.
Roll call and suspension.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Parks?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albi?
Yes.
Councilmember Kramer Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer Ding.
Mayor, just very excited about this project. We'll link the West Side, including Priceville, Westwood, and South Fairmount to the Mill Creek Trail and the entire Crown Project. I was very pleased with your assistance. This was my first announcement, or this was, I was part of this announcement when I was first elected to council with your assistance, so thank you.
Absolutely. Further comments? Roll call and passage, please.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Parks?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albi?
Yes.
Councilmember Kramer Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Item 33, first reading, please.
An emergency ordinance authorizing the city manager and employees of the Cincinnati Recreation Commission to solicit and accept monetary and in-kind donations.
Roll call and suspension.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Parks?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albi?
Yes.
Councilmember Kramer Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer Ding.
Thank you to CRC and their employees for leading the 2025 toy drive and getting us in the spirit of the season.
Further comments? Roll call and passage, please.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Parks?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albi?
Yes.
Councilmember Kramer Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Roll call and emergency?
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Parks?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albi?
Yes.
Councilmember Kramer Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Thank you. Item 34, first reading, please.
An emergency ordinance authorizing the city manager to accept an appropriate proceeds of $3,238,784.59 from the fiscal year 2026 sale of renewable energy certificates.
Roll call and suspension.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Parks?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albi?
Yes.
Councilmember Kramer Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer Ding.
Mayor, the city is authorized to sell these renewable energy credits. The proceeds go to the, of the sale go to the Water Works MSD and into the revolving energy loan fund.
Thank you. Further comments?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Owens.
I just wanna say that, you know, this revolving loan fund is certainly working. And in spite of, in spite of what's happening at the federal level, I'm glad that we're still able to take advantage of some of these.
Absolutely. Further comments? Roll call and passage, please.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Parks?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albi?
Yes.
Councilmember Kramer Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Roll call and emergency?
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Parks?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albi?
Yes.
Councilmember Kramer Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Item 35, first reading?
An emergency ordinance establishing new capital improvement program project account parking facility safety improvements to provide resources for safety improvements at city-owned parking garages and lots.
Roll call and suspension?
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Parks?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albi?
Yes.
Councilmember Kramer Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer Ding.
This is a transfer from the Parking Systems, the Parking System Facility Fund. It'll be used to improve lighting and for other safety precautions in city garages.
Further comments? Mr. Jeffries.
Yeah, this is a hugely important project to think about. As Councilman Ullhorn always talks about, 60% to 70% of guns are stolen out of vehicles, often from parking garages or parking lots. And so this will help secure a lot of those lots and make them safer and hopefully prevent more guns, illegal guns, from getting in the hands of those who don't, shouldn't have them.
Ms. Albi.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Jeffries, for pointing that out. This is a really great undertaking. When we talk about safety, there's a lot of factors. So part of these funds are gonna be used for better lighting, improved landscaping, cameras. All those things make a difference when we're trying to make these public spaces safer, not only for car break-ins, but even for people who are, you know, alone at night going to get their, you know, get their car or something. So really excited about this investment and really happy to see so much work from the administration across different departments, really focusing on these safety aspects.
Thank you. Further comments? Roll call and passage, please.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Parks?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albi?
Yes.
Councilmember Kramer Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Roll call and emergency?
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Parks?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albi?
Yes.
Councilmember Kramer Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Item 36, first reading, please.
An emergency ordinance declaring the city's expenditures from the Department of Community and Economic Development general fund on personnel operating budget account for Main Street Small Business Support Program serve a public purpose because the small business operating support will foster local improvements and investments and increase neighborhood vitality in over the run.
Roll call and suspension?
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Parks? Excuse me, Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Parks?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albi?
Yes.
Councilmember Kramer Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer Ding.
The Main Street Small Business Support Program has been a success. This is a relatively minor amendment to the ongoing program that will allow the city to allocate the final $110,000 that will assist five to seven additional small businesses on Main Street.
Further comments? Roll call and passage, please.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Parks?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Albi?
Yes.
Councilmember Kramer Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Roll call and emergency?
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Parks?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albi?
Yes.
Councilmember Kramer Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Item 37, first reading, please.
An emergency ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a water service agreement between the city of Cincinnati and the city of Fairfield, Ohio, for the continued sale of standby water to the city of Fairfield.
Roll call and suspension?
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Parks?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albi?
Yes.
Councilmember Kramer Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer Ding.
This is a standby water agreement with the city of Fairfield. Fairfield operates their own water system, but would purchase money from the city of Cincinnati in the event of an emergency.
Further comments? Roll call and passage, please.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Parks?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albi?
Yes.
Councilmember Kramer Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Roll call and emergency?
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Parks?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albi?
Yes.
Councilmember Kramer Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Item 38, first reading, please.
An emergency ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute the Seventh Amendment to the Butler County Water Area Contract to extend the term of the current agreement.
Roll call and suspension?
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Parks?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albi?
Yes.
Councilmember Kramer Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer Ding.
This is a surplus water agreement with Butler County. Uh, the city of Cincinnati would contract with Butler to provide, uh, surplus water for wholesale and retail use.
Further comments? Roll call and passage?
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Parks?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albi?
Yes.
Councilmember Kramer Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Roll call and emergency, please.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Parks?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.